Turn your cell phones to silent if you haven't already. Thank you. Citizen comment requests need to be turned in. It looks like I have them here. Prior to the start of the meeting. We will. You could, I. Yeah, you can bring it up here. Thank you. Okay, let's see here. If there are any students in attendance and we aren't done by nine o'clock, we'll take a short break and sign your form so you can go home. Will the deputy, or will the clerk, sorry, I always do that, please call the roll.
Thank you Mayor Schwartz, Councilmember Lombardi.
Present.
Councilmember Fancher.
Present.
Councilmember Martinez.
Present.
Councilmember Myers. Councilmember Scott. Deputy Mayor Madewell. And Mayor Schwartz.
Present. Okay, at this time we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance. Councilmember Scott will lead us. Does any council member wish to move a consent agenda item into a business item for individual discussion and vote or make other modifications to tonight's agenda? Deputy Mayor Madewell.
I would like to pull item number I.
Okay, that is build on unplatted land, I think. Resolution thirty-nine seventy-two. We can pull for individual discussion. Are there any other modifications? If not. Okay. Councilmember Scott is asking, why are we doing that now? Uh, to have item J also moved from the consent agenda either for individual discussion. But we now have I and J. I would accept a motion to accept the agenda with the changes.
I'll make the motion to accept the agenda as presented with I and J being pulled.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, I guess we'll just go ahead and get into it. Um, the council invites citizen comments to hear from the public on matters before the council or relevant to the council's business. The council values free expression of all points of view as an important democratic value in this community. Each speaker is allowed a maximum of five minutes. If others have already expressed your views, you may simply indicate that you agree with the previous speaker. The council expects respect for those who have positions with which the one may disagree, so debate or interactive discussions are strictly prohibited. Please refrain from applause after each speaker, only address your comments to the council and not to staff or the audience. Council may request staff research comments received for a potential future action. Please take private conversations outside. When you are called to speak, please begin with stating your name and city of residence for the record. First up tonight, we have Lisa Delugee, I believe.
Hey Dustin, it appears that there's a lot of other people that want to speak if it's okay with you. Um, can I go ahead and reserve my time till after the new business on the agenda?
Um. Well, we have one period for citizen comment, so unless this is in regard to a specific agenda item, I'd prefer you give your comments now.
Um, I would feel more comfortable if I can do it after. Or, it's okay.
Okay, thank you.
If it pleases the council, Alicia Delugee, Lisa from Moses Lake. Um. Last city council meeting, I addressed some concerns and issues that I was having with Hope Source and retaliatory behaviors that I was exhibiting on their behalf. And they had told me to get the in-kind receipts from the city. And um, I got, and city council directed Kevin to handle the matter. I got a phone call two days after from the city telling me that, I mean, I already know that it's Hope Source that needs to be providing the in-kind donation or the in-kind receipts. And what those are is, it's just when a business donates something to a nonprofit organization, they get a receipt and that can be used for a tax write-off. I don't need it. It's, it's my gig, but it's, I'm not, I'm not the one paying for it. Um, so anyhow, I get a phone call two days later from the city letting me know that supposedly they've been sending them to Domino's Pizza, which is absolutely not true. Um, I asked Deb to, to get me the in-kinds and she let me know that she doesn't work for me. She works, or that unless Kevin says to, she's not going to. So, um, I wasn't feeling very confident with that situation. And I already let Kevin know that it was hurting my brain, um, having to deal with these games and psychological abuse. So I filed a public disclosure request to get it. And I was supposed to have received something yesterday, and as of yesterday, I still haven't received anything from the city. So if these were supposedly already done, then it shouldn't be a matter of, I, I should have already received those. So what I wanted to do is go ahead and gift you proof that I get the in-kind donation forms. Unfortunately, I don't have permission to give my sponsors email address out, so I did delete that out. Uh, proof of the, at least one of the, um, on, in this particular one, at least there was eight in-kinds. So there's proof of that one. And then the email from the city saying that I'll be receiving a response by Monday, February twenty-sixth, twenty-sixth, and that was yesterday. So I'm not sure this. Now I'm not even getting a public disclosure request from the city. The city's covering for Hope Source or the city staff's covering for Hope Source. These are liabilities and instead of correcting these liabilities, they're compounding the liabilities. And I'm not a sue happy person. I, I do, I do have degrees in law and justice and I do address, I do bring forth liabilities when I see them and even the county is pretty good about, you know, if I tell them, hey man, this is a liability, hey, this person's doing this. They're, they're quick about getting those investigations. They're quick about making those changes. They're quick about showing good faith and good standing. And for some reason, I don't know why, the city manager is opting to participate in Hope Source's retaliatory games. But it's not okay. It's actually a liability and I would like for us to work together and show good standing and good faith. It shouldn't be that difficult to get an in-kind receipt. This is just weird.
Okay.
And then also I was told by a homeless person today. Oh yeah, and another thing is Hope Source has decided that I'm not allowed to go on the property, so I can't bring pizzas to the homeless anymore. And a homeless person told me today that evidently they haven't been getting propane and according to Hope Source, it's because of you guys. So why is there no propane there too? And especially this is winter.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions? Deanna.
Uh, very quickly Lisa, since we're short on time tonight. Um, when did you put the republic records request in?
Uh, the public records request was submitted on February sixteenth and I got the five-day letter. So, um, what, what she said was they'll provide a response to your request on or before Monday, February twenty-sixth. Which exceeds the five days, but I'm not trying to make an issue out of that. It's just if they, if they already have it and they already supposedly were sending it to people, then it shouldn't have been an issue giving it over to me. And then I'll go ahead and.
That was my only question. I just want to confirm.
Okay.
With staff that they're working on her public records request.
No, they're in violation right now.
And, and there's a deadline because everybody gets to ask for public records. And we have a certain deadline to meet, correct?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah, if we have the record.
If we have the record. Okay. Good point. Thank you.
So. And I did talk to Domino's Pizza. I talked to the manager and the district manager and let them know what was going on and that I was being retaliated against and that I was having negative reactions. Um, but asked them if they have ever received any in-kinds and of course they didn't because it's not their gig, it's mine. And here's some receipts that show.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much for your time. I'm sure we'll get this figured out. Uh, let's see. Right, lost here. Next up, we have Alicia West.
My name is Alicia West and I live in Moses Lake and I work at Settler's Natural Market downtown. I'd like to speak on the two-hour parking limits. The problem at its core isn't the amount of time people spend down here, but the lack of spaces available. And there's a lack of spaces available because it was designed like that. I remember when the city changed all of the downtown area to purposely encourage people to park and walk and have to go by as many businesses as possible. As well as keeping people active while going to and from their vehicles. That was a long time ago. And I don't feel like there was enough thought put into how much we would grow and thrive. I feel like enforcing the two-hour time limit won't solve the problem, but it'll deter people from spending time and money down in our downtown area. I believe the city of Moses Lake should be encouraging customers to stay down here a long time and take in as many of the businesses as possible. The two-hour time limit not only hurts the customers, but us employees as well. Which is the other issue with parking limit. Business owners and employees, while they definitely need to continue to be respectful of the customers for their own businesses and the clientele of our neighbors, we still need to have parking available for us. There's been many ideas thrown around for this problem on online chats as to where employees could park and not interfere with the customers, such as the small lot near Washington Federal Bank. Down here by City Hall or further up on the street where the two-hour parking signs are not posted. This is problematic because that small lot near the bank will only accommodate about twenty-six employees. There's a lot more of us than that. The city hall is pretty far away for us to walk to our downtown businesses for a lot of us. And also walking back to our vehicles when it's dark is not a safe option. There's a lot of scary people out there these days. Anything marked, not marked with the two-hour limit usually still belongs to a business. And they need their parking for customers just as much as we need it for ours down in the heart of downtown. None of us employees are happy about taking spots away from potential customers, but we all need somewhere to park, employees and customers alike. I think we all do our best now to try and keep key spots open for customers, but there's not a lot of options. I asked that if these limits are enforced like that, that this city not only allow genuine customers extra time to enjoy all of their plans for the day, but also to give us a list or a map of where it is acceptable for business owners and employees to park. Where it's not a reasonable distance, an unsafe walk, or not taking spaces from customers, and it is legal to park for eight plus hours a day. I can't speak for everyone, but I feel that if we knew where we're supposed to park to help the situation, then we would do it. But enforcing the two-hour parking doesn't seem like a really real solution to a real problem.
Hold on Alicia. Does anybody have any questions? Deanna?
Thank you. Um, and I'm sure there's plenty of other people out here to talk about parking. He, there are a lot of good points that have been brought up about the limit of parking, the limit, uh, the hour limit, employee safety. Um, I know personally when I go and park, uh, one, I didn't know that there was a two-hour limit. Um, two, I don't, I normally will park in one spot and travel all the way around to the stores that I normally go to and not move my car all the time. Just as there are hair salons and restaurants, so, uh, and wine tasting room, uh, stores, so um, two-hour limit parking seems to need to be looked at again. I was going to wait until the additional business. Uh, does council wish to have a business brought up to a future meeting? Um, but, and I don't want to head anybody off. Um, please share your concerns um, so that we understand where you're coming from. But I believe with as much, uh, comment and reaction from, from the business owners and the public, um, I do believe that it would be uh, a good conversation to have to review the coordinates and see if there are changes that need to be made. How did we get there and how did we, do we need to make changes now? Thank you.
That's good.
Thank you. Councilmember Scott.
Um. Years ago, there used to be parking meters everywhere. Um, for everybody who parked and you put a parking meter and you either got a, you moved on. I think there's a, the change in the businesses that are downtown. I mean, it used to be you stopped in the Full Smeller Drugs, you stopped at Grants, you stopped, uh, you, you just bought something and you got out of there. And now there's a whole lot of businesses that require more time, whether that's a hairdresser or whether that's an attorney or whether that's a tax advisor. Um, so that demographics has changed as well. And you know, it's, it's a problem. There's not an easy solution. I don't know if we're suggesting that the city buy property and make a parking lot, a paid parking lot. I know the one there next to the old liquor store has been fenced off and somebody said that maybe one day is going to be a paid parking. You know, maybe, maybe, uh, businesses need to consider buying parking spaces. Um, you go to Spokane or any other city and it's like, okay, you want us parking spot, yours is Park eleven and it costs you this much a month. I don't know. Um, it's, it's. No, they don't. Well, they don't own them all. I mean.
Ma'am, would you like to come up and make your comments?
I was avoiding this, but I will speak.
Uh.
My name is Mackenzie McIntyre. I live in Moses Lake, Washington, my whole friggin' life. And two-hour parking downtown negates the business and revenue that the city has tried to increase. It died off for several years after JCPenney's and Berry's and multitude of businesses left because they could not make a wage anymore because our city went on a decline. Our city has progressively grown and grown and grown exponentially in the last ten years. The available parking spaces in downtown eliminate more revenue for downtown and our city as a whole. As a business owner, an employee, and a consumer, you don't want to have to park for only two hours and then get a ticket. Costs thirty-five dollars to buy milk, bread and eggs. That's the cost of a parking ticket for parking past two hours. And in the five years I have worked downtown, it has never been enforced. And yet, in the last week and a half, we've been giving a warning, basically a threat that is going to be now enforced because a, a business that is complaining about their revenue and people parking in front of their business is hindering their revenue. We have all succeeded downtown and done fairly well. We've dealt with the shitty parking situation. We want to know where are we supposed to park? It's parallel parking for a large majority of Third Avenue. That negates any extra spaces for owners, employees and customers. We have ten people working in our salon on any given day. So that's twenty parking spaces if we all have a client at the same time. We're just one business. There's multiple businesses that have multiple employees, multiple customers. There's not enough space. That's the problem. So we want to know where are you going to create more space?
What would you suggest?
Removing the wide sidewalks that are useless. You put in these large sidewalks years ago for farmers markets or downtown events. It took a, oh, two lanes on going east or west, north, south, whatever it is. And you went down to one lane each way. Still parallel parking for these wide sidewalks. Well, during events such as the farmers markets or Spring Fest or parades, you close the street anyway. So you don't need these extra wide sidewalks. There's no purpose to them. If you took them out, back to the regular size of the sidewalk, you could have diagonal parking like there is in front of Sue's and the post office, in front of Mason's, in front of Washington Federal Bank, in front of the pawn store. That would add double the amount of parking that we have right now. There's still going to be parking issue as the town grows. There's only so much space. But that would free up a lot of space for everyone.
Okay. Uh, hold on. We get to ask you questions now. Um, Mr. Myers.
More so a comment than a question. So I was approached by a lot of people, a lot of business owners.
I know that.
A lot of people downtown. Um, overall, I'm getting a fifty-fifty split. Some people are excited that we're enforcing the two-hour.
I highly doubt that.
And then the other half are.
I highly doubt you have a fifty-fifty split.
Only the angry people are here about the two-hour parking, the people that are happy.
Well, then let me know who's excited about our parking.
This. This, just to.
Oh, hold on just a moment, please.
My, my thoughts, uh, keep the two-hour parking on the parallel parking spaces only. And then all the diagonal parking to remove that portion. Um, we're in talks right now of, of potentially restriping, uh, Fourth and Fifth Avenue to allow for more parking. Um, so.
So. Okay. Here's the problem, sir. While you have a wonderful beard, good for you, you have no hair on your head. So you don't understand the time it takes to do full foil a person's hair. I have someone in my chair from anywhere from as quick as a thirty-minute haircut all the way to four hours. And if they get there at nine o'clock in the morning at the right time and park right in front of the salon, within two hours, head full of foils or in the bowl with toner, they'd need to move their car. Now, as a business owner, I would feel like that's my responsibility for them and their car if they get a parking ticket. So then I'm out an extra thirty-five dollars because they've had to park there for their appointment. So still have, charging them, still having the two-hour parking in front of our business in particular still does no good.
What about all the, the side streets? That's what I'm talking about, Ash Street.
The diagonal parking where there's more spaces available?
Correct, because those are currently two-hour parking only as well.
All of, all of downtown, all the way to Frontier and past is two-hour parking.
To remove that portion. That's what I was trying to say.
The two-hour.
Yeah, remove that along those diagonal parking so that it would be allowed.
You said parallel park, keep it where there's parallel.
Where there's parallel parking.
Yeah, well, in front of, in salon, it's parallel parking.
They'd have to walk a little bit.
Right. But if you have an opportunity to park in front of a business to get in there, like if you find a good parking spot, you're going to get it. Right?
Yeah, I think we're gonna, uh, I do have two other people, it looks like, who want to speak on this issue who have, no, it's okay. I, I understand your passion about it as somebody who's trying to make a dollar in the city. I appreciate that. Um. There are two other individuals, Mary Gerber and Jeannie Huck. Um, it's been suggested that we actually have a study session on this as well. Um, for those of you in the audience tonight who wanted to talk about this, I honestly apologize. I don't, I have no understanding of what specifically spurred the change in policy as far as enforcing the two-hour code. Thank you.
We had numerous complaints, um, about the two-hour parking down there. We have ordinances in place that prohibit two-hour parking downtown. And we have signage downtown that shows two-hour parking. So the businesses that were complaining, uh, were asking us to enforce what we had signed and what our, uh, our code says. Now, obviously the council could, we could vacate the ordinance and get rid of the two-hour parking altogether. We could extend the parking out from two hours to maybe four hours or we leave it alone. Those were the three options I was going to suggest to the council and then we could just bring the ordinance back.
Sure, I think this would be a good opportunity to get the downtown Moses Lake Business Association in here to talk more about this because, well, I, ma'am, excuse me. Excuse me, ma'am. I'm making a suggestion right now. If you're representing the downtown Moses Lake Business Association, you might want to wait your turn. Um. What my proposal is, is because we're talking about a few different issues here. One might be purchasing a piece of property so that we can put in a proper parking lot. Those are all expensive proposals, taking out the wide sidewalk. Those are expensive things. You know, we may want to have a robust discussion on this. It sounds like there's a lot of passion about this and maybe we can take that passion and organize it a little bit and have a constructive conversation about this rather than yelling back and forth. Um, so if that's amenable to everyone in the room, we could set that up for the next council meeting. And that's fine. I will, I will allow that. They did get their cards in. Yes, ma'am.
So, if, if, if I can speak to that. I, I don't know how parking tickets came up. I, I understand that an officer went down there. So, um, and I clarified that in the post that if I had thinner skin, uh, it, it wasn't nice, but I will say this. We put out that this is an educational campaign. We don't want to go to enforcement. We're not trying to go to enforcement. And that what we would be doing would be giving warning notices and that we were looking for egregious offenders, those people that have been there for one, four plus hours. And I will say that over the last two days, I've had an officer down there, uh, taking photos so we could see, are we having any issues? I can tell you that, uh, yesterday, I think he saw two cars, um, that were over two hours, weren't over four hours. So it was like, okay. And today I think he's found four cars, uh, two of which were there, um, longer than what I'd say three or four hours. And so I, I recognize the passion. I recognize everything that's going on, but I think it's also important to know that it, it was never about enforcement. Uh, the most was a warning notice. A warning notice is a piece of paper saying, this is the, the statute. And you, you would be found, you know, potentially in violation, but we're asking you to, to be mindful of it. So that is how it came about as far as us. I think it, uh, is probably what spurred, uh, a lot of this emotion, which I, I certainly get. And I don't recommend as a, a future strategy to try to solve any problems, uh, just in case anyone was wondering, but, um, excuse me, certainly not our goal. Our goal was to educate and try to, uh, move people around. I can tell you this. I've been a police officer for thirty-some odd years here and for thirty-some odd years, we've dealt with this issue and it comes up every few years. Uh, we have something like this, um, and then it, it falls to the wayside. So, um, but that is where it came from. Just to give you, uh, the story of, of, uh, maybe what, what spurred this and it, it started with, with us.
Thank you for the clarification. Victor?
Yes, um, I've spoken to a lot of folks down there as well, um, and already hearing some of the comments. Um. It, it seems like it's a number of issues. It's not just one. Uh, we, we hear that the term safety of being able to walk to a lot. So even if there was additional space, that's a concern. I hear lack of space. I hear time constraints. So I think the, uh, study group is going to be a good suggestion. I also would like for you folks to get together and lay out in an organized fashion, what is it that you want to see the city done? Or what solutions that you would like to see? And then that way, when we have our, uh, study session, we'll kind of know what's going on and what is it, because, thank you all for coming, first of all, because without your feedback, we won't know what's going on. So, uh, so by getting that additional feedback for us, that is, will help us tremendously because I, I really think it's more than just a two-hour um, parking time constraint. So if you can put that together and we'll do our side, I think we can come up with a solution. There's never really good problems, but this is kind of a good problem in that there's lots of people coming downtown to shop. I mean, ten years ago, you didn't have that problem. So I think this is a really great opportunity for the community and for the local municipality. So I think this is a really great opportunity for the community and for the local municipality to work together and take a negative and make it into a positive. So those are my suggestions.
Thank you. Any uh, anyone else? Actually, we'll we'll go ahead and uh, Jeannie Huck. Okay, well, I appreciate you coming and being willing to speak. I hope that you attend our our study session. Okay, thank you. Uh, and Mary Gerber.
Mary Davenport Gerber, Moses Lake. I'm not going to say much, but the only thing that with this study session we need to look at as the representing the Downtown Association is that the signage isn't clear. It just says nine AM to five PM. After talking to Officer Sands, it's confusing in the code to even read it, first of all, but also only it's Monday through Saturday, no matter, or yeah, Monday through Saturday, no matter what, but then also on Sunday, some businesses aren't two hour parking. So that needs to be clear because with events downtown, with Brews and Tooms, we have to be able to figure out where these people can park safely. But also, not just for that, so we know what's where we can park and not get a ticket. And I think the four hour parking would be a great option. Also, maybe just Monday through Sa- or Monday through Friday, enforcing either two hour or four hour, because that does help with events and more people coming downtown on the weekends.
What about if there was just no time limit?
I mean, yeah, sure, but if we have to have a time limit, then we can make it more reasonable for the hairdressers, for people, people to be able to park in front of a store, go store to store, go to Mason's at the end, and then turn around and go all the other side streets, because there's a ton of businesses on these side streets that I don't even think people even realize that they're there. And so if we could just park, be able to shop, you know, in a timely fashion, but and I understand the other businesses frustrations about employees parking in front of their business. That is infuriating. I have a business downtown. I totally understand it. Another option is CQI Square is two hour parking. Maybe we could take the parking limit if we ha- take it out completely and let business owners and employees know that, hey, this is a, this is an option. Um, there isn't still enough parking, but then that gives the, what she was talking about, it's Pam Myers or yeah, Pam Myers is by WA Fed. That gives that spot and and with Synchronized Square, it's centrally located with some of the other businesses. Another problem is the lighting. So some of our light posts are very dim. And I don't know if it's just because maybe the plastic or glass needs to be replaced, but a lot of women are nervous about walking downtown when it gets dark. So I think if we taking out the sidewalks, we can't tackle that anytime soon. And I I wouldn't even, that's not an option right now. I understand that, but maybe making the lights a little brighter. My alleys light has been out for years, and I don't know if that's the city or or the PewDie, not quite sure. But if we have proper lightage, people maybe won't be so nervous to walk a a block or two away. Especially in the summertime, right? Winter's a little bit different, and maybe we could adjust things in the winter. I'm not sure, but that's kind of a solution I have.
Do you think people, and I think this is, there's a perception here that people don't want to walk more than a block to shop?
Well, I think that, I think that depends on the age.
I agree with that as well, and I think that that's not, I don't think it's as true as people make it out to be, but I agree, if there was better lighting, it makes more sense, you know.
For at night.
A little more comfortable if it's a block and a half or two blocks, so.
Right, right. And I think, you know, I know that the ladies that park in front of my store in Sue's, I know their cars are going to be parked there for a bit, because they're also going to go to Red Door. And then they probably have lunch in their prayer group meetings or whatever, and then they come back. I know eventually they're going to come into my shore and stop with or shop with me. I'm not upset about that. It's just frustrating because everybody is complaining about it, but nobody unders- no one can have a proper solution to this problem. And I think helping with the square, giving that just open parking by WA Fed, that's another part. The parking that everyone is talking about that is going to be paid, it's almost up and running. I don't know if anyone's drove by today. He's got his signs out. He's got, you know, you just download an app, you click on it. That's a, that is an option for people. It's not a great option for employees to have to pay for parking. But with that opening up, it gives more parking for cut consumers and employees and business owners.
Great, thank you. If you hang out for just a moment. Uh, Mr. Scog.
I have a question if before a study session. I like numbers, and I know you talked about how many spaces you need and how long. If you could maybe if we had fifty spaces, do we need fifty one, and that's makes everybody happy, or do we need two hundred and thirty?
I think.
Some, but but if you could take and and ask people downtown, how many parking spaces for what kind of time does your business need? And then let's put together a number and say, this is how many we have now. This is how many we think we want. How can we fill that change, fill that? But to just talk about, you know, we don't have enough, how much is enough? And that that would sure help me make some decisions and and get, at least give some logical input.
I think what would be better, though, is asking each business how many employees they have and how many parking spots they require each day, and then ask them how many customers, because I think what the major issue is the business owners and employees taking up the spots.
I think Mr. Scog's point more so is he's requesting that as the biz- Downtown Moses Lake Business Association, if if you guys get together and sort of, again, I think it's been asked that.
Employees or?
Yeah, I mean, another theory on it is that, okay, as as the association, you all decide that you have a policy that your employees won't park in front of the businesses, which it sounds like some of that's tried to happen. And that may affect which areas get the time limits and which don't. So all, I think what I would like to see, I think Victor, Dave, and I all would like to see just some thought put into that. I, quite frankly, am not an old lady who does all of those things downtown. I have a kid who do- does dance in the evenings and stuff like that, but I don't have enough experience shopping down there. I'm not the authority, so um, any help that we can get on that would be appreciated. Um, Deanna?
Just thank you, um, Chief Sands. Um, your communication was very clear. It was not about enforcement. It was about education. Um, I don't know how it suddenly jumped to parking tickets. Um, but of course, this is very important uh, issue, so at least the the communication I saw.
But real quick, he came to Mallory, our director, and asked, or he did not, sorry, Officer Raines. She Sands asked Officer Raines to come talk to Mallory, our director, and make a post and saying, and Officer Raines told Mallory, the director, and she is here so she can get up and speak, that they were going to do a two day, uh, just a warning, and then starting this Monday was going to be tickets on cars. That is why everybody is upset. And then I talked to Office, it was a miscommunication between Officer Sands and Officer Raines, but that's where this, all this miscommunication came about.
So um, to follow up, then, uh, because clearly there was miscommunication. Was the social media post that said that people were going to get ticketed um, in two days, was that fixed? Was it taken down? Was it updated to say, oops, no, we misunderstood?
I can't speak. I don't run the social media, so if you'd like to talk to Mallory, she can get up here and she, or if she could just, yes.
I did not see an update. That's why, yeah. Thank you.
Yep, the session already scheduled for next meeting, so it will be two meetings.
I think it would have it will be in four weeks from now.
Four weeks, it'll be in two meetings.
To to address the immediate issue. Right, okay. I I think we've all heard that, that there
They're just not taking.
There won't be any tickets issued, correct?
I just want to make sure, because we do have Brews and Tooms March sixteenth, and before the study session and everything, I want to make sure we don't have to tell our participants, hey, set your alarms, two hour parking, got to move your car.
No, no, no.
That's why I do want to make this clear or here that we're not gonna issue, so I.
Totally valid. Yep, okay, so I think chief, okay. Thank you. Yeah, and hopefully, Mary, you understand this. This was somewhat of a surprise to all of us up here, how that all occurred, so.
I think it was a surprise to a lot of people.
Okay, I'm going to try to have a smile on my face about all this, but I understand what happened as a result of the way that it was rolled out, and that's not, not cool. So I apologize for that, for what it's worth. Mr. Fancher?
One question, just because Mr. Myers' lots got brought up multiple times. Ironically, I was involved when that lot got paved with with that multi tenant building there. And we got so tired of daily doing our own policing, because they had it in their lease that all employees had to park across the street at the lot. And you know how many times I had to go down there and get those employees to not park in front of that building? Every day. So part of the help is your association respecting the rules. He bought that lot specifically for the employees of that building. And they weren't using it. And it it's in their lease. It's, I mean, and and same thing, no different than our police. We were going there every day to basically tell them that they were in violation of their lease, and we lo- actually eventually lost a tenant due to the fact, but I mean, it it's an education seminar, and that and that for them, that's pretty convenient. That building for the employees there, so we do have to come together and create a solution. Thank you.
Mr. Myers?
Is there anything that we can do today to help alleviate some of this as we start to educate and work towards a solution? I I liked your uh, recommendation of St. Caius Square, removing the two hour parking there. Maybe make it or lengthening the the parking time limit there.
I think maybe, I mean, I guess I would be willing just to wait with the understanding nobody's going to get a ticket in the meantime.
Yeah, it just defeats the purpose of having a code anyways.
It, well, as as was stated earlier, it hasn't been enforced, and now all of a sudden it's being enforced, so that's. Deanna?
Um, I'm fine with waiting and not making any changes as long as it is clearly communicated via social media, being talking to each business owner and customers that the city never had any plan to ti- ticket anybody, and we're not going to until well, until we've had a bigger discussion about how we can potentially uh, help everybody. All right, thank you very much.
Great. And then also, I guess I would ask staff to reach out to the specific complainants and invite them also to the study session.
Absolutely. I've got uh, I've got their numbers.
I don't, I don't hear anybody in the other side of it here tonight, so that would be interesting. Um, okay, there's another issue we have here. Um, the Hutsels, are you still here? Are you both coming up? Okay.
Um, my name is Rebecca Hutzel. This is my husband, Wayne Hutzel. And we live in Moses Lake, and this is Sharon Van Wirt. We live in the same neighborhood. And I tried to get a letter to everybody. I don't know if you got it, but it was about the uh, I'm asking for a moratorium on vacation rental homes licenses. Because we were, um, last year we got involved because we found some unlicensed vacation homes operating in our neighborhood. And and then um, we I brought, we brought it to attention of the city. And um, what happened was um, the city is still giving out licenses for these vacation homes. The ones that were unlicensed went ahead and applied for license, and so I got, we got concerned about that. So um, that's why the main thing is I'm asking for a moratorium until the code is updated, because currently the city is updating the code on vacation rentals. So that's what I'm here for. Um, and um, if you have any other questions about that?
Questions?
Because everybody got a letter, I'm thinking, okay.
Yeah, I I did not. I think it's, it was sent, and for some reason I couldn't open the attachment when when I received it. Yeah.
Yeah. I actually delivered a paper one to everybody.
Okay.
So.
Sorry, I also have a scatter of papers here, so.
Right.
Can you just briefly explain what what your concern is?
My concern is that um, the code is being currently updated. And until it's set in place, and I talked to Mr. Fancher, I believe, and he was concerned that it, when the code was made, it wasn't vetted very well. So people don't understand what's going to happen. And so right now, it's 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 not good code.
And can you give me an example of something that you would see that could cause issue?
Yes. Um, okay. Well, what the big, one of the big issues is the number of the of the homes that are being um, a given license to. We live in a a neighborhood about ninety homes. And so one of my points is trying to control the percentage of how many vacation homes can be licensed in the area. So that's not in code right now. And also, um, just other things that I think need to be added to it is um, making sure that the neighbors are notified when someone applies for a license or e- even just put an application in, so the neighbors can have some input on that. So those are a couple of big things I think need to be happening. And there are a couple of little things too, that make sure that there's signage at the at the home that is uh, that is a vacation home and a contact number for twenty four hour contact if there's a problem in the area. We've had people come on our property from a vacation home because they just did. And then we didn't have anybody to talk, to call and talk to them about. So those are just a couple of things, and I have a couple of things. So that's kind of my thing. I said, I don't think the code is ready to issue more licenses, and the city did that anyway to people that were illegally offer off, offering uh, vacation homes. So.
Okay, yeah, and actually I do, I do have the copy of the letter here in front of me, and I did, I did read this in the in the letter you you wrote about um, a business that was noisy.
Yeah, that's another issue, another home occupation business. There's two issues going on. This, that other one's been ongoing for about three years, and this one kind of just tumbled into the area. So it's about home occupation businesses.
I appreciate your concern. Um, Deanna?
I'm just curious if uh, planning or somebody in that department can answer. How many licenses for vacation home rentals do we process? Monthly, yearly?
Jessica can answer that, because she just sent the report to us.
We have roughly twenty seven licensed licensed and operating um, vacation rental or short term rental properties inside city limits, and we have, I believe it was a hundred and thirty, hundred and twenty seven um, home occupations listed that are active and licensed.
Uh, can you explain the difference?
Right, so home occupation could be um, in-home daycare, cottage license, operating um, bakery in their home. Um, a vacation rental is very specific. It has its own chapter in code. Um, it goes through its own permitting process through our community development planning division. Um, so they are very different in nature.
So your concern and uh, potential request is regarding vacation home rentals only?
Right, right now, I'm just asking for for now, yeah.
For now.
Because like I said, the code is isn't, isn't good. You know, there's too many holes in the code. And so I feel like, why are we giving out business licenses for vacation rental homes when the code's not good and the code is being updated right now? So I'm asking for a moratorium on it. Let's just stop it right now so we don't have any more problems.
Do we have any that are being processed now?
I have one in a pending status that's going through the review process right now.
Okay, and how long does it normally take?
Um, I would say through two to three weeks, fourteen days minimum. Uh, we have to give out neighbor neighbor notifications uh, through our planning division, and Kirsten, if, jump in if I misspeak. So the neighborhood does. There is a process in place in our current code language that does require um, neighbor notifications.
And that's one thing is to increase that uh, distance. Now it's two hundred feet. I think more neighbors need to have input on it if they're across the street from the business. You know, I mean, like I said, just more people, so that is needs to be, and Sharon would like to say something. She's our neighbor. She would like to say something.
I didn't plan to, but I will, only because we are right next door to us. We live a ten fifty ten fifty one Edgewater Lane, if you know where Edgewater is, right across the lake. You can see it from Michael's, and there's one right next door to us. It was there two years before we knew what it was, and we found out, and then they, and without a license. Then then we're okay, we're trying to just coexist. Only we have, I have a problem with the number of people. They've had anywhere from six people to thirty people. And we're going, and our doc is right here, and theirs is right here, so all. And we're going and our doc is right here and theirs is right here. So all summer long, every weekend, there's lots of people. We don't mean to be, you know what I mean? Okay, then right across the street, we get another one. So we've got one beside us and across the street. The man that lives across the street is very great. He has only a hot tub, no access to the lake. He doesn't come through our property to get there. But there's cars and cars and people and packing in and out every weekend. So now we've got the two and we're thinking, is there not going to be a limit on even the distance between these? Because we can see it happening all the way down Edgewater, called the state on each each end, and we could have a house, every other house. It's prime property for this walking distance of town. I can see why they want to. It's just that we are residential. We're not commercial. And there's a big difference between in home baking and beauty shop. Because compared to the motor, guys making redoing ski doos with their garage door wide open and six cars in the front yard and ski doos all over. And they said they're just doing their personal ones, but they're all, this is going on year in and year out. And it is loud, but it's really more inappropriate to the residential neighborhood. And these houses are a major investment for people. And you want to go to sell your house someday. You don't want to have a surrounding neighborhood of people who don't own the houses, having businesses. That's all I have to say.
Great, thank you. Mr. Scog? Jessica, when a permit is given, how long is it good for indefinitely?
No, those have to be renewed annually.
Every year?
So the the permit to operate your vacation rental has to be renewed annually through the community development department. Their business license also has to be renewed annually through Department of Revenue and they have to have an endorsement.
Is there a mechanism where neighbors, enough neighbors could complain or or you know, want that one to be revoked and they could impact that decision whether or not to renew it or not?
Is every year, is every year when they get renewal, are we, is there going to be a re-notification to the neighbors?
Well, can you can you complain and there's enough complaint, you know, for that particular? You know, can we do something with that and say, you know, you weren't a good neighbor? You can't stay or you can't keep functioning like that.
Because you weren't good neighbors.
Unfortunately, I can't speak to that. I'm not real familiar with the review process that happens through planning when they resubmit that that permit. I I know the fees, but I'm not sure. Kirsten, do you?
That hasn't arisen. I I'm not familiar enough with the code, but I don't believe there's a revocation clause. It's something that we could look at. You know, if we had complaints on a property and we were logging those complaints, when they came up for renewal, we could then consider whether we wanted to allow it. But I don't believe we have it in place. Good luck.
I mean, I know there's, I know Shalan is just overrun with this kind of a deal. And and then instead of getting families and people who want to live in the neighborhood, you get investors. And they just look at it as a way to, you know, fund a property that they get anyway. And it's not a neighborhood thing at all. And I think, you know, that's not something we're after here. So I don't know if we could make something that, you know, looking at codes, I know with Bend, they have a percentage.
Of how many can be used?
They have a distance number. I think all those things could be looked into. And I guess in far as putting out permits for right now, I'm glad to hear that it's a one year, but maybe we could just offer a, you know, if they're, if they did get a permit in this pending one. You know, maybe it's a something that must be renewed. Maybe we could make part of that renewal process. What did the neighbors think? You know, if you haven't been a good neighbor, you can't stay. You can't keep functioning like that. So.
We actually, Catherine just looked it up in our current code. They're allowed two violations, complaints, violations. And and third one, the community development director revoked the owner's vacation rental dwelling endorsement for a period of 12 months. So that's already in code. If the, but it's complaint based, so it's somebody that have to make a complaint about it.
I just have the question about the business of being commercial property or residential property. What is Edgewater Lane now coded at? Is it, is it commercial? Is it residential? Is it slash residential slash?
It's residential. And I think that's the distinction here is that you have home occupation. So. Yes, I mean, I'm sure that there are municipalities in the United States that don't allow it, you know. But.
We're just worried about future and investment of our property diminishing because of.
Understood. You know, I've heard a similar concern for, you know, assisted living even. So that's troubling to me. But because what do you do?
That's all we're thinking about right now.
Yeah, okay. Yes, sir.
Rebecca made reference to the codes being rewritten for this. Is there a timeline for that? And can we get involved in some?
I think that's the fair question at this point. Absolutely. I was just had a sidebar with Mr. Fancher. You know, I don't think moratoriums get a little bit sticky, quite frankly. I mean, you do have some, you know, redress or you can complain if it gets out of hand. What I'm getting at is that, yeah, it'll probably take us a little bit of time. The code is rather extensive with multiple sections and we're trying to go through it somewhat systematically. The food court thing, we we moved up a little bit, but yeah, so I think I'll let Kirsten speak to that.
Well, our goal is to adopt the new code by this last meeting of June, which I think is June 27. And right now we've had several sections of the code reviewed by the planning commission. We have a stakeholder committee with three council members and some developers. And we've had three meetings. So once they're done vetting it, they will start going online for the public and they can participate. And then we will hold public hearings or public comment periods.
How would we get notified of those public hearings?
Pardon me?
How would we get notified of the public hearing?
On those types of projects, they are typically only online and in the newspaper because there's not like one project site specific that email notices. It would be a huge mailing to send it to the entire city limits. But we'll put it on social media and just try to blast it out there.
At the city website.
Yeah, for sure.
So my concern again is, is that the city is issuing light business license to vacation rental homes right now. Who's to say before June or whatever, you could have 10 people walk in and ask for a vacation business license for a vacation rental home? And will it be granted to them? You see what's happening? Because you guys went ahead and gave one to someone who was operating illegally. And I know someone else is applying and they're operating illegally. Okay? So what protection do we have? It's written in the code. You cannot do it without a license and they're doing it without a license. I mean, you know, what protection do we have? We're the neighbors. We live there. That's why I want a moratorium on any more issuing of any vacation business license. Yeah, just temporarily and wait until you guys get the code set up and we put some rules in place.
That hurts outside my hands, but if we find, let's just say somebody is, you're saying, operating illegally. If they come in for a permit, that's actually what they're supposed to do. It's like, okay, good. They're coming into compliance. We don't, and your concern is that we don't have anything to stop them or deny it.
Right. It's in code that they're supposed to be penalized for operating illegally. I, as I read the code. And they weren't, and I know that. And you know that. They weren't, they weren't given a penalty. And I know you guys only found them because I went online and I found them. And it wasn't even that hard to do. Okay. So my my concern is still, I want to protect my neighborhood.
We're going to discuss this a little bit. Victor?
Yeah, so for staff, you know, my philosophy you've heard in the past is I want assets to stay assets and not become liabilities. I want to be proactive and not reactive. And my concern is when we develop the code, are we looking three to five years out? If, in other words, will the growth be exponential on these rentals? And then can code enforcement handle that? And you know, what are we planning on doing? And because I I get the feeling right now that code enforcement is really burdened with a lot and potentially can be exponential as far as what they're going to be able to handle. So however we develop the code, I just hope that we're going to be looking three to five years out. Because, you know, especially in the summertime, this is a pretty popular place. And these rentals could go from 27 to 75. You know, in two to three years, right? And then we've got 12 parties that are going out of control. You know, that's a lot of burden on on law enforcement and code enforcement. So that's, that's my only concern. I just hope that.
Time to go.
Yeah, lights out.
Well. Was that code enforcement that I'm not sure? No, seriously. If if you can keep that in consideration, maybe forecast and see how you would handle that.
Thank you, Deanna.
Well, you cleared up some of what I was going to ask, which was the timeline. I know that you've all been working really hard to get that code up to date. And I'm sure that there are priorities within that timeline. So I appreciate that it sounds like maybe June?
Yeah, we, yes. It will be done by June. It will be adopted by June.
I did have one question regarding since you, a business license is required. And somebody had mentioned that, you know, there's 30 people in a home. Where does fire come into play? Because it seems like fire comes into play with every business. And so is there any code language regarding limit limits?
There are some, some topics on the sprinkler requirements for VRBOs. But Derek would would have more information on that. So give it to him. So in the past, we haven't really reviewed these through the fire department. Because at one point we had language through the city. About not requiring the sprinklers, but there is code language about sprinkler systems in these because it becomes more like a motel. And so we're looking at more than a single family home at that point. It is a business. And you have people staying there. A lot of that is, they're not familiar with the structure. So having, you know, a site plan or an exiting plan and having the sprinkler system in there is just to help alleviate that. And I believe they can still be like the NFPA 13D, which is a life safety system, not a property conservation system. So there's some change in that. So those would be my recommendations. We need to probably look into that a little bit more. But that'd be my recommendations that we at least look at life safety systems or these structures.
I'm assuming the life safety is relatively less expensive than the.
Typically, yeah, because you're basically using a sprinkler system off of the domestic water system. That's where the D comes in. So it's actually heads off of the the PEX water system versus actually putting a full NFPA 13R where you're doing the CBPC pipe, doing a full blown.
I mean, we could just require full sprinkler systems and then nobody would want to do it.
Well, I I would like to request that we look at that and when we're developing or looking at that code.
Sure. Like I said, the direction previously was not to go down that avenue, but we would be more than happy to research that.
And if I could weigh in, if if there's 30 people there and you can tell, call. Because I'm looking at the code and it's saying the maximum, maximum occupancy of the rental shall be no more than two persons per sleeping room plus two additional persons per unit. So call, that can be a violation.
Yeah, okay, call violation. So even though I'm, thank you, but even though I'm calling for a moratorium, you guys.
Hold on. Sir Mark?
No, and I did converse with converse with you and what I, what I did say is when they did this code, it was brand new. And and like I told you, and sometimes you have to, that's why we're doing a code update.
Yeah.
It's not just the VRBOs or on the commercials now verbo. So but but it's so much of our stuff. And and the hard part is, I mean, honestly, I mean, no different than here. They're so intertwined with each other. So there is a systematic way to do it. I understand your concern about a moratorium and wanting to wanting to stop that. We are on a, as Kirsten says, and we're trying to keep the feet to the fire to get this thing done. And I appreciate you saying June. So but we've got a lot to get through and we're making good headway. And and you asked me how I thought of them and I told you that I'm not against them. But but I'm not against doing it right. And and so I think we have some experience and I think we need to look at it. So I I think we have 27. How long has it been in play, the code? 2018, 19? Does that sound about right roughly? We have 27. I mean, I I hear you loud and clear about it, but we're not very many in the sheer amount of time, five years?
2015 originally, it was revisited in 19.
So redone in 19. So five years or four and a half years, we have 27. I'm not worried about 75. I mean, I I get it. If we don't do something, you know, and look, take a hard look at it, it can be, and I and I agree with 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 Victor. We want to do it right, but I think we're on a short enough leash. I think we can get there. And I would definitely don't hesitate with your complaint. And if you see 30 people over there, that's, by the way, that's that's life safety again, not only for them, but for you.
We have two in our call list. That's what I'm.
I understand. 100%.
And I know it's a big job and I appreciate what what Ms. Peterson is doing. I know it's a hard job and I know you're trying to get it done. And I appreciate you listening to me and had some good comments. Of course, I have another issue, but I think I'll bring it up another, another day, another night. So.
Yeah, we do have a mailing list of sorts. So I guess I would ask Kirsten if you can add these folks to make sure that they're here for the public hearing on on this stuff or that, you know.
Yeah, I was told that you just have a, I I'm have the Facebook for the city on my Facebook. And that that was supposed to come through that as a public notice, but you know.
Yeah, I think it just hasn't been set up yet, honestly.
All right. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dave, did you have something further?
Just that if we get people who are applying for permits and we give them, make sure that they know that a code is coming. And that it might change dramatically. And just to be aware of it so we don't have a shouting match at the end. Well, you said I could do it then, but just make sure that everybody knows this will be subject to the new code regardless of what happened yesterday.
All right, thanks. So everybody had their fill of this subject. Okay, Amy?
All right. Amy Delugey, Moses Lake, Washington. So I'm just going to make a few suggestions prior to the next upcoming meeting when we have do the public, whatever. So I am gonna, I am gonna really push for the food versus a non-food establishment. That's one thing that I said, the vocabulary needs to be strengthened. And the reason being why is there's slews of violations that can be given to a food establishment versus a non-food establishment. There are strict rules and regulations that state that a food establishment needs a bathroom onsite. ADA compatibility in non-food establishment does not, blah, blah, blah. We can go through those, but that definitely needs to be black and white. We need to get over this gray ground. That's what got us here. And I think it's appropriate to address this now. I've got a suggestion for the 20 foot barrier. I've already taken that into consideration. Just, yes? Can you hear me? Can anyone not hear me? Does anyone need me to repeat anything I said?
It's recorded, so.
Okay, I got you. Okay, the 20 foot barrier, I just want to let you know, Dustin, that's something I've already taken into consideration. I do think it's problematic. I look at the, I look at the establishment next to me every single morning. It is very detrimental. It clogs up that intersection. People almost get hit. What I have proposed, I've already talked to Cortez Fencing in the next two weeks, since this is motion forward. I will have a permanent fence with gates that will allow for you guys to have the easements that you need. A, so you're not sucking up any of my liability. I'm not sucking up any of your liability. And secondly, as a responsible business owner, I require to be listed CC'd on the insurance. So if, because I can't do both businesses at one time. So if the food trucks are out there, they're not properly enforcing, which is a part of my policy, that they've got to go out there and tell people to respectively appropriately park, motion people away from those areas. If they're not doing that, then I'm protected as a business. I also think it's something you guys should take into consideration. If you feel like it's going to be something that's a liability to you guys, it's no problem to CC the city on that. I don't even mind doing it. It's just an extra layer for you guys stating if something happens, we got you covered, okay, as as long as it's on your lot. But I did take that into consideration. It's something that I'm going to tie together because I've seen people, I've already seen it. It's a hazard. We don't want that hazard. We don't want to create that. We want to create ease coming in and ease coming out. So I am in agreeance with that, the 20 foot rules. I do think, you know, with some of them, yeah, it gets a little bit, you know, a. I do think, you know, with some of them, yeah, it gets a little bit, you know, a handpicky, whether you could be near a driveway or this or that. I get it if you're being a barrier or something like that, but anything that's public safety, it does need to be enforced. I'm in agreeance with that. Second thing, I am putting in permanent, you guys already know, I planned on putting in permanent water, permanent sewage, permanent water, permanent electricity as well as internet. I was going to start out with five. I thought if I had to suck up a quarter million dollars to allow for these people to appropriately have functionability, I'd do that. I want to see these people grow. It's been something that a lot of people want. I'm not asking for anything from anyone. However, there is a price differentiation. The people that want to use that, they're going to pay more than the person that wants to use a generator. So I think if we can meet in the middle until we can fill it out, that would be great. Where I'm coming through, I'm going to plug those in. We'll see how that works. We'll see if we get functionability. It's on my expense anyways. I mean, let's go. I'm willing to do it if you guys are willing to do it. And then secondly, you know, I get it, the generators can be, you know, quite troublesome for people. If you've got a hundred of them going at one time, but let's, let's go, let's do a split, five and five, or let's start somewhere where we're, we're weighing it out. If we, if we start to see that people are complaining or it becomes a nuisance, let's work together. Let's get an ordinance involved. I'm all down for having twenty permanent, permanent locations for them. It's their responsibility. It takes all that responsibility off of me. I don't have to worry about my store being disabled or my location being disabled because they've got a mishap and that's independent on them. They're paying their own bills. And I think prospectively, that's something that's great in there. Last but not least, ADA compliant. I really do want you guys to focus as a city. It is horrible, the state of Moses Lake, Washington. And a lot of these businesses are not ADA compliant. I see, I see people all the time that have sit down, sit down tables and they're not offering this. It's going to take one person to get into a hazard before the city gets the backlash. And I've already told you guys, I'm going into mitigation with the Department of Justice this month because someone is entirely out of ADA compliance and I'm serious about that. I have not identified Moses Lake, Washington, but I want to see it happen. If I have to be ADA compliant, everybody else has to follow in my footsteps. There's a lot of coffee stands, let me just point it out, that had to put bathrooms, that had to put those handrails in it. The one next to me doesn't even offer that to their employees. So if we are going to motion for it, we do need to even take those types of things in consideration. We have people that are functioning like it's third world democracy and it's not their world democracy. So these types of things should be taken seriously. So the city doesn't get a backlash because that's what's going to happen if the federal government has to come in more than once. And we start pinpointing this person, this person, this person, this person, because you guys are the ones licensing them. I know what it took for me to be able to open my doors and it wasn't anything easy. I had to follow every rule and regulation, have all my protocols intact before I got to open and operate. And I didn't get to open or operate until they were all fine tuned. And it's not fair that I have somebody sitting right next to me that is completely out of ADA compliance. And not only that, it's showing respect as a city that we're caretaking for those people who are disabled because we do need to show that.
Thank you, Amy.
You guys got any questions at all?
No, you're a great manager of time at that.
Thank you.
It looks like David does.
I've got this down now.
There you go.
I'm trying not to waste time.
Mr. Scott.
I get the ADA compliant part of things.
Yeah.
I, I don't know how that applies to existing businesses. And that, you know, I see the look in your eye like, what the hell don't you mean? How does that not apply? I, I know that to, to bring everybody up to different standards, that literally put people out of business. And, and I know, and I know that because I've seen that happen where, where there's not a five foot turning radius in a bathroom. So they put a bathroom right in the middle of a store. And then frankly, not a single person in a wheelchair goes in there and they go out of business.
Unfortunately, sir, that is federal law.
I, I get that.
So you may not agree with that, but the federal government, sure the heck, if you were to have this conversation with the Department of Justice, which I will call them tomorrow. I would love to hear what they have to say in regards to your comment. I do agree, but they gave them since two thousand and twelve. So when it changed in two thousand and twelve and they asked for everybody to become ADA compliant, guess what they said? You don't got to do it overnight, but you do have to show an honest attempt, okay? Which means that every year you had to be creating the barriers and boundaries for this federal law. And so unfortunately, whether the city agrees with it or not, the federal government disagrees with you, sir, entirely.
That won't be the first time the federal government would disagree with me.
Myself either, sir.
Or the last.
Any other comments? Thank you so much for your time and continued effort on this, Amy.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And Cedric?
Hello, my name is Cedric Eklund from Moses Lake. And I just wanted to talk about the food trucks and the food courts. When looking at the current changes, I would like for the city to kind of keep in mind about the barriers of entry that these, the people that are putting in for food trucks and trying to start up that business, they're not going to be having as much funds or potentially as much disposable income to be able to foot that and then also for the rent and other things. And so if we can find a way to make it possible for everybody to maintain a level of safety and a level of standard of business, but then also just helping the, the people grow, helping businesses grow and helping Moses Lake continue to grow. So.
Great, thank you. Yeah, and I think that'll be reflected hopefully in the, you know, breadth of allowances that we have in the code. So the generator being one of them and all those things, we'll definitely consider that. Thank you. All right, that concludes the citizen comment for the evening. Thank you all for your participation.
Mayor, can I ask, would you mind, would the council mind moving up the firefighter oath? Because the entire fire crew is here waiting and so.
I appreciate the citizens for not having any fires in the last hour. Yes, we can absolutely do that.
Thank you.
Which I believe you, you.
Chief Ash, yes, thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for allowing us to move this up. We do have the entire on duty crew put together for once. And we wanted to have them be able to see this. So I'm going to have firefighter Gary Lebakan come up and his father is going to be pinning his badge. Gary was hired just about a year ago. He's gone through a one-year review and evaluation period. During that period of time, he's been judged by his peers and his officers on his ability to do things like structural firefighting, ladder work, roof work, emergency medical services, literally everything that we do. And we're proud to badge him as a firefighter instead of a probationary firefighter. So with that, I'm going to have you turn to me, raise your right hand. And I state your name.
I, Gary Lebakan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Washington.
Constitution of the Wa- Washington State.
I recognize the badge as a symbol of public faith and trust.
I recognize the badge of a symbol of public faith and trust.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Uphold that faith and trust.
Faith and trust.
In discharging my duties as a City of Moses Lake firefighter.
In discharging my duties as a City of Moses Lake firefighter.
With that, I'll have your father badge you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. We, the mayor's report tonight includes the airport commission reappointments. There are two reappointments on the airport commission expiring on the thirty first of March. I recommend for the airport, airport commission reappointments of Rod Richardson and Richard Waltman for another four-year term expiring March thirty first of two thousand twenty eight. I would accept a motion to approve the reappointments.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, I've got a couple of proclamations here this evening as well. The first being, let me make sure I have these correct order. I do. Thank you, Debbie. The first proclamation this evening is the Government Communicators Day proclamation. Whereas the role of government communications professions is to inform, educate and engage their communities. And whereas communication in government creates trust and inspires residents to act and be involved. And whereas government communications create relationships and calls to action, build awareness and understanding through storytelling, engage and foster engagement on civic issues and use all channels to include people in critical decisions. And whereas it is essential to have strong communications in government because it is a foundational element of living in a democracy where citizens have the freedom to make their voice heard. And whereas the City of Moses Lake is proud and has deep gratitude and recognition for government communicators professionalism, dedication, hard work, commitment, enthusiasm and sacrifice. Now therefore, I, the Mayor Swartz of City of Moses Lake, do hereby proclaim February twenty fourth, two thousand twenty four as Government Communicators Day in the City of Moses Lake and encourage all residents to thank the employees who support communication efforts citywide and who have dedicated their careers to ensure the City of Moses Lake has effective, impactful and successful communication strategies that resonate and are relevant. Is Lynn here this evening? Okay, that's our communications professional who I know of. Obviously out communicating. So if you see Lynn, please make sure to give her a huge thank you. The next proclamation I have is for National Engineers Week proclamation. Whereas engineers utilize empirical, scientific and technical data to formulate creative solutions that allow the community to enjoy cleaner air and water, safer transportation systems, more productive and efficient environments and an improved quality of life. And whereas we are a nation, state and city created largely through enterprise and it is the skill, ingenuity and hard work of engineers that transforms creative vision into reality. And whereas the City of Moses Lake continues in a new century and period of economic challenges, we recognize the important role that engineers play in the revitalization of our city infrastructure. And whereas engineers in the City of Moses Lake are joining other members of the engineering community throughout our nation to celebrate the annual National Engineers Week. Now therefore, I, Mayor Swartz of the City of Moses Lake, do hereby proclaim February eighteen to twenty four, two thousand twenty four as National Engineers Week in the City of Moses Lake and encourage all residents to thank the employees who support engineering efforts citywide and who have dedicated their careers to ensure the City of Moses Lake has effective infrastructure in our community. So I see Lee is here this evening. Thank you so much for your service, Lee Ramsey.
Thank you.
In celebration, we gave the engineers the night off.
I, we appreciate that. Thank you. Glad you're here for the fun of it. Moving on, does council wish to have any business brought to a future meeting?
Yes. I mean, I already brought it up, but I'll officially bring it up again about a study session to include downtown businesses and, and the public, anybody who's affected regarding not only the ordinance but potential solutions regarding our limited parking, anything else that might have to do with how the city can help facilitate that and the businesses downtown.
Thank, thank you. And I already say this, are we going to have a full hour for that study session whenever it happens?
If you want to have an hour, we can have an hour. That would mean that you would have to be here five thirty.
You know it's going to take all that. So I mean, I'm, I'm up for it. I'll get extra sleep the night before if everybody else is.
And it will be on March twenty sixth because we have a previous study session for the next meeting.
Hour?
Seventh, the twenty sixth, twenty seventh.
Yeah. Yes, ma'am. All right. Any other items to bring to a future meeting? Okay, moving on to the city manager, or excuse me, yes, city managers' report. We've already done the oath and badging. So on to GAAP to cash basis of accounting, which is a riveting topic.
We, we are going to leave this very short. You've got the memo in your file along with the pros and the cons of GAAP versus cash. If you have questions, Madeline's here, but we are going down the cash basis route unless there's anybody that's against it. And if not, then we'll just, I'll end it at that.
Any questions? I guess I just have one. What is the practical reason for the change?
The biggest reason is, of course, economics. It's much less expensive for us to do cash basis reporting. We don't have to train the staff nearly as much from a GAAP, a cash basis perspective. So that's the biggest piece right there. Our reporting will become much simpler and much quicker. Right now, it's, it takes a long time for not only us as staff to prepare the reports, but it takes the state auditor's office seven to eight hundred hours to do a audit from a GAAP basis versus probably two hundred to two hundred and fifty hours for a cash basis audit. So it's, it's a huge difference. And the state auditors have talked to me repeatedly about making this change for the city to move to a cash basis recording.
I appreciate that change is scary. So I mean, there are obvious, I did my own research. There are drawbacks and advantages to both. So, I mean, I understand in for a public entity such as ours, there are some concerns that aren't present for private interests. So with that in mind, I would incent to that change, but I think we're looking for consensus from the group. Do we want to just show our consensus by a head nod, please? Any further discussion? Looks like you have the keys to the car with that.
We will likely need to come back with some ordinances because there will be some changes to bond covenants. So we'll bring all, and policies. So we'll bring all that back to you at a later date.
Yeah, well, don't sneak anything in there. Moving on to the consent agenda, and we do have two items. We've polled I and J. Typically, do we discuss those first? Doesn't matter.
You move them to new business and you can do them.
Motion to approve the consent agendas, items A through H.
I'll make the motion to approve the consent agenda, item A through H.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on, there is no old business scheduled for this evening. So new business, I will go ahead and start with item I, which is to build on unplatted land. Thompson Resolution three nine seven two. I'll open it up for questions.
Well, what I'll do is I'll just present the staff report to you quickly. Came from my department. But we have a piece of property that is considered unplatted. So our, the Moses Lake municipal code requires that all lots front or have access to a street, road or highway. This lot does not. So our code actually has a provision in there that allows you to build on unplatted. And I was actually going to just share the, the location on screen real quick. I don't want to take up too much time, but I will, I'll take as much time as you want me to. Okay, so it'll show soon, but it's, it's over in the May Valley area. It fronts the lake and the property will show up here soon. Essentially, they've been able to get an easement from some of the neighboring properties to go ahead and get the utilities to it, and they're not allowed to, like, further subdivide in the future. So it's this lot right here, and what I was gonna do was actually just zoom in for you. Oh, try. Can't seem to move. It's this property right here. And the controls aren't working quite like normal. But as you can see, there's, there's no street nearby. You have a cul-de-sac here, and you have a cul-de-sac that ends here, and the lot's back here. And so when two subdivisions went in, I don't know how it occurred, but that one was just kinda left, uh, alone, so long time ago. So essentially, the property owners want to just be able to build a single-family home on the property, and they've been working with the department for months trying to find a solution. So that's where we're at today. If you go ahead and approve the building on unplatted, um, there is a attached resolution that just states that, um, it's allowing for the issuance of a building permit, and that we find that there's no adverse effects to public health and safety, and then there's some conditions that they have to obtain an easement for utilities from a neighboring property. They'll have to pay their development fees, fee and move water, and collect those at time of building permit. And I believe we had in there that, that they need to obtain the building permit within six months of adoption of this resolution. So, do you have any questions?
I do. So we've been talking about water, potable water, port, potable water, sorry, and, uh, developments that live on the lake to start when possible pulling water for irrigation from the lake. I would like to see, this could be the start of that happening, and I would like to see, uh, language put in to this particular development that, uh, they have to work with getting water out of the lake instead of using.
Irrigation purposes?
Yes.
So we'd need to amend the resolution? Could we approve it with the amendment to come, or do we need to bring it back?
I'm seeing some head nods. I mean, I like the idea.
It makes a lot of sense. It's a big lot, and, and they're not gonna wanna irrigate with their domestic.
No, but, yeah. Codify it, and make, as Judy said, I think it's just a good exercise.
So if, if council wants to go ahead and make the motion to accept it with that additional requirement, you could take action tonight, and staff will take care of putting that language in the resolution.
I like that. Any further discussion, Judy?
No, I'm good.
Okay, well, do you want to make a motion to that effect, then?
Pass it off to Mark.
Oh, okay, well, Mark would make the motion that.
Let's make a motion to approve, uh, item I, built on unplatted Thompson Resolution thirty nine seventy two with the addition of, of requiring, uh, irrigation, um, I guess irrigation water to be of, um, why don't, can we, can we other resources? I mean, we can't. Can we require MLID?
Yes.
Okay. From the MLID.
Second.
Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
Good job, Judy.
Yes, very, very well handled there. Uh, the next item we'll consider here is item J, which is Water Regulations Ordinance thirty forty-three and Fee Schedule Resolution thirty nine seventy-three. Dog.
Um, I think this is an important ordinance. I think it will be contentious, and I think, um, I didn't want people to think this just happened through a big group pile of stuff, and we said yes to it. So, um, one thing that I wanted to make sure that the public understood is that, um, the phrase has kinda been coined, "We don't want your money, we want your water." And I think that needs to be something that is, um, clearly understood, that this isn't to penalize anybody, but it's to try to get as much water for other development as we can, and people need to to prudently use the water that they get, but it's just not a, it's not a money deal. It's not a thing to grab money from people, um, and I wanna, I would just wanna make sure everybody is very clear about that.
Yeah, I think I'll add to that. Uh, yes, I beli-I believe the problem is larger than the, the fees that we would collect on this. The intention is to get egregious users of the water to limit their consumption somewhat, so what was identified during this process is that there are several users, but not, certainly not the majority, that use a significantly larger amount of water than the average person does here. So, there's been debate back and forth as to what the average really should be in an arid desert climate, or, you know, but, um, regardless, you know, there are these users who we've identified that use far more than their fair share, to an extent where it's not understandable in some cases where they're putting the water. But at any rate, that is the aim of this, is to try to curtail those users from using more than really we think they need. This is a developing situation, and none of this is meant to be permanent, in my mind, at least. The ultimate goal for me is to seek more water, uh, because the growth is not going to stop. So, there's a lot of outside forces who have investments in this area at this point, and so we have to address the realities of the situation. And a lot of this was due to practices that were undertaken by the city in the past that they didn't necessarily expect the shortage to occur necessarily as fast, or, you know, as it did if ever. So, that is where we are right now. I also, um, this is not an easy decision for me to make either, so with that in mind, does anybody else have any comments or questions on this? Deanna?
I would just reiterate that this has been a long conversation, um, and a lot of, uh, input from the city staff, uh, pulling records, um, data, um, and we've had good conversations, council and city staff, to come up with some reasonable solutions, and as, uh, Councilmember Scog mentioned, we're not, we don't want your money, we really don't. We want your water, and, uh, we've, we've, uh, struggled with this over a few years with increased water rates, and, um, that just didn't seem to be working, so we're gonna try things a little differently. It does sound extreme, but as, uh, Mayor, um, Swartz mentioned, it's, it's unfortunately, fortunately, a small group of people in comparison to everybody. So I wanna thank all those who are diligent about their water use, and hopefully, if you have a neighbor, the, the owner is, uh, it's all rest on them, whether or not they're going to be, pay these expensive, uh, fees or these incre-increase rates. Uh, really, we just want your water.
Thank you, Deanna. Uh, Victor?
Yeah, uh, the last tier that was added on, um, a lot of folks don't understand or have asked about the bill statements, where it's, it's in CFs, um, and that's cubic feet. And when you're starting off at ten thousand on this tier, that actually translates into seventy-five thousand gallons a month. So that's a pretty, pretty large number for, you know, a three or four-bedroom house to be using uh, on a consistent basis, as, uh, Mayor Swartz, uh, pointedly pointed out, where is the water going? Um, and so I know one of the things we'll be looking at in the future are leaks. It's possible that might be an issue, too. So anyway, that's just to give you the, the, the graphic of it, seventy-five thousand and up. Tremendous amount of water.
Thank you for that perspective, Victor. Mark?
Let me, let me put it a little different. So, an exempt well in the county is five thousand gallons a day. You just, you just did the math, that's sixty thousand, okay? Five thousand gallons a day in exempt, in exempt well is set up that if they have an acre of ground, they can, they can irrigate up to a half an acre. So again, we're talking in-city here.
Right.
Oh, it's a lot of water, and so that, and I think back to what you just said, that's what we want. It, it doesn't seem right, so we have to have people take responsibility, so it is a hard one.
Yeah, and as part of this, we will be reaching out to the public as best we can to, to talk to those individuals on a one-on-one basis to, to figure out some solutions. Luckily, some of them are, you know, lakefront properties, so there's a good opportunity there to solve the problem. I think we'd go ahead and accept a motion.
I move that we, uh...
Hold on, Deanna, sorry, I'm going to clarify something very quickly. It's two motions, actually. One for the ordinance and one for the resolution. Thank you.
Yeah. She's ready.
I'd like to move, uh, that we accept, uh, Water Regulations Ordinance three zero four three, and the can I do them together or are they separate? Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
I'll move the second portion, which is the, uh, to approve the Fee Schedule Resolution, uh, thirty nine seventy-three.
We have a motion in a second. That was Judy, for the record, on the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Okay, moving on to new business, item number two, which is multi-family tax exemption for Pratt- Prattville duplexes.
All right.
Peterson, yes?
I'll be presenting this. Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor and Council. So, we have two of these applications, so I'm gonna quickly explain the MFT program, then I'll talk specifically to the Prattville one, and then let you make your motion and move on to the next one. But just for some clarity, I had given you a handout that explains what the MFT program is. It's run by the Department of Commerce, but when the Growth Management Act was enacted, and as the cities, or I'm sorry, the state has looked at various housing policies to encourage more housing to be constructed, they offered up this as an incentive. Essentially, what it allows is for a community to go ahead and designate something they call a residential target area, and I'm gonna have that, I'm gonna start pulling that up really quickly, because it takes a minute for some reason. So you set a certain geographic boundary within the city limits to try to encourage multifamily housing be constructed within those limits, and usually it's within an urban setting, an urban area of your community, and in yellow is, is our residential target area. And so this is a third over to Broadway, and you got the lake, and then you got City Hall here, and it comes up all the way to just past Ninth off of Division Street. So we currently have two projects in the city limits that are multifamily tax exemption, but what happens with, this is the incentive. Basically, if somebody were to construct multifamily housing, once it's finished, they only pay property taxes on the assessed value of the raw land before they constructed the housing units. So if you construct just any multifamily housing, you get an eight-year exemption. If you do, at least twenty percent of the units are affordable housing, you get, um, a twelve-year exemption. And then there's another one that's twenty years that we don't really qualify for, and it's regarding building new, like, housing for sale. So, uh, we've got one project that's just the eight-year, and then Pioneer Meadows is, um, off of Ninth at the end of it, and they have twenty percent of their units, so they get the twelve-year exemption for the affordable housing. So what we have before you today is a project that was proposed by, uh, and as you, let me get back to the names, I apologize, because we have two. This one's the one from Haley and Daniel Pratt, and it's the Prattville duplexes. They're proposing the eight-year, and, um, Councilmember Lombardi pointed this out to me, but he had a question. In, in the packet, there was two site plans, and we were intended to include this one that shows existing duplex and new duplex, because they got started on this. They actually applied, and they have one of them finished. We were revising our, our application form, and so they're gonna get going on that, but I, if this will share it, I wanted to show not sure if I'll have to do a new share. Yeah, I think I will. Okay. Let me change it really quickly, I apologize, but, um, Councilmember Lombardi had asked a good question about, he wanted to see the correct site plan for this, because we accidentally included two of just the, the area. So it'll show up here in a minute, but it's showing the front elevations for each of the units. And then there, there's your floor plan. They're kinda basic, but they're, they're finding a way to fit more housing on a small city lot, so the city thinks that's great. And the way it works is they apply to the city. We have them hold a pre-application meeting. Um, they, we make sure they're meeting all the state requirements that are outlined in our own city code, and then they come to city council to request, as it comes out on the very first page of your packet, they're requesting to enter into a contract with the city. It's, it's in your packet on page ninety-one. It's called a tax exemption agreement, and it states that they'll finish this within three years, and then I will go ahead and issue, if you approve it tonight, you would also be authorizing me to issue the conditional certificate of acceptance of tax exemption. And then, um, once it's actually completed, they come back for a final certificate, and when it's all finished, we send that on to the assessor's office. So just explaining the whole process for this project, and, um, staff is recommending approval of that, and the action requested is on page eighty-one. Are there any questions?
Deputy Mayor Madewell?
So a couple of comments that were made to me. What is considered affordable housing? What is, um, um, a dollar guideline?
So in the back, the second page of this handout, it, it explains that, um, so under the statute, household income is based on the area median income. So with households with incomes at eighty percent of the area median income or less, they're considered low income, and households at a hundred and fifteen percent of AMI are lower, moderate income. And so we use those amounts to help us determine, you have to see if somebody falls in that category, and then you base their rent based on where they fall, and they shouldn't be paying more than thirty percent of their income on their housing costs. That's rent and utilities. And those are all laid out in the state requirements.
Okay, and then the other that was, um, mentioned to me is that we have a number of people who cannot do stairs that need to have affordable housing. Is, is there anything in the works maybe for just one-level apartments that could be?
Well, and, and that's kind of a separate topic, because, uh, you're kind of asking about new housing in general. This is an incentive from the state trying to get more, uh, folks to build just housing in general, and right now, we're just looking, and I believe these are just one story, these, these two duplexes, and as well as I, I think the next ones on the agenda.
And are they considered affordable housing?
No, these ones are not applying as affordable housing. They're asking just for the eight-year tax exemption. But it's great to just get more housing constructed, period. Yeah, so.
Thanks.
So, yeah, I, I've, I've seen some of this stuff done. One of the things that's nice about it is, first of all, um, we're, we're getting tax, um, based on set, whatever the amount of the valuation of the lot is right now, which is minimal. Um, one of the things that this tool does is allows infill projects that, yes, while they will receive a tax benefit for a while, eventually, when that large number comes on in the future, they're going to be paying a lot more. This is maybe the spur, you know, push to get them to go, um, work. What I would tell you, um, when it comes to this type of housing, while it won't be subsidized or low-income, you know, subsidized housing, they'll have to be market-valued, or they won't fill. And so, um, I'm not worried about that part. Where, where we're having a bigger problem with affordable housing is the number of units that are available. It's, it's a supply and demand deal still here, you guys, and until we get caught up with units, unfortunately, the word affordable is, is not driven by us, it's driven by the market. So the more multifamily or higher-density units we can do will help offset that. Because right now, I mean, I was just, and it'll be in my committee report, at, at some functions with some of these new businesses, they're starving for housing. And, and so, um, I think this is a great tool to healthily build some stuff closer to services, too.
Thank you, Mark. David?
This afternoon, Kirsten, what kind of money are we talking about as far as, what's in, what, is there a number that?
Yes.
Is there a number that that? Is there a number that that represents?
On this first one, what we do know is that the property is estimated, well, its assessed value is $60,000. According to the applicant, they're stating that the project's estimated value is $500,000. So they would just continue paying the taxes on $60,000 for the eight years. And we didn't take the time to calculate what that is, but essentially, we are not losing money necessarily. We've got the advantage of it's a win-win situation, where we're getting more housing units in the city. It gave them an incentive to even build them in the first place, and then we'll collect it in the future. So we're still going to get the money that we're currently getting. And then, yeah, and then in the future, after the year passes, as Mark said, we'll get to collect it on the whole thing.
Okay, thanks.
Victor?
Yeah, I wanted to follow from Mark's point, which is that we are number one in the country in least affordability as a state, as a state. And that means that as far as housing available per person, we're the worst. And part of that has to do with regulation that has been around for decades now. And so this program, when it was put in place, the concept was that they could increase four to one. So in other words, if you had a lot that, let's say, had an old house, they knock it down, can you, you know, can you put four houses on there, four housing units? And so this pretty much fits it right to a T. So I think it works. I had some questions earlier about making sure that they stay as residential rentals and not as commercial units, because it is zoned R3, which means that you can do commercial. So Kirsten, I guess if you want to address that a little bit.
Yeah, so, and Victor pointed out, so the application form itself states that you have to have at least 50% of the space be permanent residential occupancy, which means you can have half of it be commercial. Sometimes that might be a bottom floor is commercial and above is residential. But with this particular application, they have indicated that it's going to be residential, and then we actually have an annual check-in with them. And if they were to ever want to modify it to where they converted some, they'd have to come back to modify the contract. And then if they fell out of compliance, they would just lose their exemption altogether. So that was a good thing to point out. And so the contract, the word contract is what's used in the city code, but really, it's this multi-family tax exemption agreement with the city between the city and the applicant, and that would need to be modified if they were to ever change it. But the intent, I think we're going to keep it as housing and continue to rent it that way.
One more thing, and then before this is formalized, they will put in a correct start date and a correct finish date?
Yeah, we'll make sure that the contract itself reads accurately. I think you pointed out some.
They have the same basically from last year, yeah.
Read it quite thoroughly. Did a great job.
Very thoroughly. Any other comments? Okay. I'd accept a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to item number three, which is another MFTE for Aspen Homes.
Okay, so this one has been submitted by Tyson and Hunter Millot, owners of the Aspen Townhomes Project, and it's located off Alder and Sixth Street. You said you couldn't hear me. I'll just repeat what I was saying, but this one is owned by Tyson and Hunter Millot, and it's located off of Sixth and Alder. And I'll share that again. This one's a five-unit complex, and it actually is two-story. I was just looking at that. And it's right there, and I will scroll down a little bit to the next page. Just turn sideways. Let's see. I don't want to mess it up. But if you can, yeah. Turn your head. Reloaded, and it took me to a different page when I tried that. So the same situation where they would like to go ahead with the eight-year tax credit. And when you ask about the values, the assessed value of the land is currently $75,000, and the project's estimated value is $1.3 million. And there'll be larger units, and pointing out again, just the value to getting more residential units in the city, and staff would recommend, moving forward with the same motion.
Sorry, Deanna.
Doesn't learn to read lips. Hurt card. Two things, as we were talking about this. Is there a limit to how many of these projects can be allowed or allotted through the city?
Not a limit to the number. They just have to be within the residential target area. Now, you guys, city council, could in the future to decide to expand it, or potentially even designate another target area where you want it to grow. But we'd have to go through a process to demonstrate that and make a formal motion and change the maps.
Sure. Second question, and I'm aware that, you know, the cost of a home or a house increases when it looks super, super nice. So are there any requirements that these look nice enough but not like dorm buildings, as has been mentioned about previous buildings? And then, you know, is there a requirement that they kind of fit into the neighborhood?
So for the MFTE program, there's nothing different than we would have for any other residential construction. And we do want to have some better design guidelines with the new code, but we know we have to be careful and not ask for too much.
Okay.
But no, there's no difference for qualifying for MFTE.
Okay, thank you.
That's one of those questions we don't like to ask. It's difficult, right? Yeah, cost is always king, unfortunately, with that. So, Mark?
Yeah, I, first of all, need to let everybody know on this one. So Tyson Millot, who is in the audience here, he hangs his real estate license at my office. However, I have had no financial gain on the purchase of the property. Well, I have no financial gain in the building of the property, nor he handles his own rentals. I will get no financial gain out of property management or anything. This decision I'm making is basically based on the overall need and driver of the program that's available. But I just thought I should let everybody know the relationship.
No high fives in the hallway tomorrow at work. Everybody's aware of what Mark's saying. Yeah. I think we'll go ahead and entertain the motion.
I move that we allow the multifamily tax exemption on the Aspen Townhomes.
We have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to administrative reports. Thank the Lord.
We only have one tonight, and that'll be Madeline, and she'll be very brief.
Yes, I will be. I just wanted to let you know that we are scheduling the annual spring cleanup for April 27th from 10:00 to 4:00. We will only be holding one this year. And so we just wanted to let you know there will be some flyers and some more information coming out shortly.
Facebook, et cetera. Our communications professional, Lynn Lynch, will be all over it. Okay, moving on, council committee reports. Councilmember Myers?
I had our GTA meeting February 15th. Nothing too exciting, business as usual. The one thing I wanted to point out was in our financial statement, we get to see the sales tax revenue for the county, which is our biggest revenue source for GTA, was significantly higher than any other month that I've seen. And I've been on that board for eight years, so that goes, I think, is a key indicator for the economy of the county, which is pretty strong, and I hope to continue to see that high sales tax revenue. That is all.
Thank you, Don. Councilmember Martinez?
Just briefly, Grant County Board of Health and Moses Lake Watershed have septic systems on their mind. Just trying to look for ways to improve, potentially get people off of septic, so they're not dumping into our lovely lake and affecting our tourism. So that's it.
Thank you, Deanna. Councilmember Fancher?
Busy. Grant County EKMI Development Council meeting last week. A lot of things going on there. They hired a new person there that started, I think that maybe a few days before the meeting. Yeah, Rochelle's replacement. Yeah. And then Community Development meeting, and Public Works meeting today. Pretty light, other than the word water. I'll let David take that over on his report. We talked about the code tonight. I've been on that committee. We're meeting every two weeks. Tomorrow again, right? Making some good headway, good participation, which is awesome. And then I was fortunate enough to be at the CELA event and the Group 14 event last week, where we became the center of the universe. We are that person. I got the opportunity with Kevin to walk a few people out the door in a good way. Senator Cantwell and their aide regarding water, and had some good conversations there. I was hoping he was wearing his old body camera, so we would have her yes on there. You have me, I'm a witness, yeah. Because she made it sound like it's no big deal to get this money, so we're going to be asking hard and heavy. But no, you guys are.
Mark, you want to tell us what the money might be for?
Water. Water. No, but I did have a really good conversation with the aide, Devin, and I think Devin has probably already reached out to some of the people to wrap the head around what it's really for. Not necessarily for them, meaning their project, but the people that they're hiring in their houses. This is the water we're talking about, the drinking water, the domestic water. And after we were able to talk for probably 10 or 15 minutes, the bulb kicked on a little bit, that what the what the driver of their projects that they wanted so bad here, which is we're lucky to have, is causing the pain on the provider. So, went well.
Is that all you got? Or, okay. Councilmember Scog?
Thank you, Mark. Economic, or just as a community development, again, it was a water, water. I think one issue that struck me, or some information that I learned, was the 12,000-acre feet of water that we thought we had, as when we were drilling wells and thought we had permits for them. Turned out that the Department of, you call it, Department of whoever, after some other court situations not in Moses Lake, had basically reduced those by 90%. So when we were drilling wells, we thought we had water rights. Everybody said we had water rights. And then another case came up in Spokane, and the Supreme Court ruled against them, and that applied to us as well. So there went some of our well-laid plans. So some of the water shortage is due to just the nature of the laws and courts today, not because we were poor planners, because we were planning well. The other thing that we talked about was in the Safety Committee, the Police Department is interested in an app that would give citizens the opportunity to be in the loop when things like loop-drive incidents happen. And we approved that, so that should be something that will be coming out shortly. That Captain Sands, Chief Sands, can maybe give us a brief comment on that?
Yeah, so I'm generally not the person you want talking about technology in and of itself, just so we're clear, but we are working with a company that does these things, because those are the people that you should work with. They've done apps all over the nation. They've been big in the South, kind of moved up in the Northeast, and are now making their way into the West. This app will allow us the opportunity to push notifications out, gives us opportunity to put functionality out there that we want, so frequently ask questions, things that might help us with recruiting tips. I mean, really, it's what we want to spend on it, right? Not that I want to spend a whole lot on it, but, and as much as, I hate saying this because it sounds really kind of dumb from a police perspective, but putting our brand out there and serving the community better and having a little bit more community outreach. So, and really, for all of that, I think we're looking at $11,000 and some change for the first year, which is the building year. And that will come out of a different funding stream than our budget, our general fund budget. So it's not costing the city anything.
You answered one of my questions. $11,000 was the answer. Is this similar to Nixle or better? There you go.
I turned it off. Better in the fact that we can customize it, and it's not just a platform to get information out. That is part of it. But it's also a repository. If we want to do some sort of information on that, it will hit our social media if we so choose to do that. You can add different links in there and get things moving. So it's actually more robust than Nixle.
That's it. Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Chief. Oh, Dave and Dave. There you go. Councilmember Lombardi?
My name is not Dave, just for clarification. So a couple of really neat developments. The Port of Moses Lake, one of the concepts that I came up with last year and had deep conversations with Bryce Humphreys at the college was creating youth apprenticeships for some of the newer companies that are moving in here. And so that was revealed, and that the port is now, does have that. They'll be placing high school students, if they want to, pursue something like with CELA and so forth. And so in other words, we want to try to keep our children here. You know, if you're not in farming and you want to pursue something else, in the past, a lot of our children were moving out, and this is one way where we're creating a platform for our children to get really great-paying jobs in new technologies. So I was really happy about that. The port will also have a meeting shortly. They'll announce it on their TIF, and that'll be for the public to stop by and ask questions and learn a little bit more about theirs, which is a lot different than the way ours are structured. And today, the Moses Lake Chamber of Commerce had their ribbon-cutting at the Williamette Egg Farm, and Congressman Dan Newhouse was there, and he and I had a talk, and then we had a meeting. And he did a lot of talking about what's going on in Washington, and then handed the mic to me, basically, about talking about the growth of Moses Lake and the port. And so he's very, very proud of how this city is growing. And he's also very understanding of a water situation as well, so I put a little note in him that we could use some help. Okay, so it was really a great, great meeting, and great things are coming for Moses Lake.
Great, thank you, Victor. Deputy Mayor Madewell?
I don't have anything. Excuse me.
Okay, I guess that just leaves me. I did attend a mayor's conference on Thursday of last week over in Olympia. Few things that I noted, there was a lot of discussion amongst the mayors about public comment. So I will say that I'm very proud of our city for having an environment where there's robust discussion, and that we don't have to impose a bunch of rules and regulations so that people can speak their minds freely here. Another thing that was brought up is just something to be aware of. The state is in conversation right now about the airports here. And this actually, I attended a couple of events, and this came up at both, but the mayor of Richland approached me, and she is interested in pursuing having Richland be a future, or excuse me, Yakima, I am so sorry, the mayor of Yakima. be a future, or excuse me, Yakima, I am so sorry, the mayor of Yakima, they would, they are pursuing having the future airport for the state of Washington be in Yakima. So the discussion is that the Sea-Tac Airport is at capacity. So how this affects us is all of this economic activity that's coming here needs, you know, these transportation infrastructure. So at any rate, Yakima is pursuing getting that airport. And so it's, you know, as citizens here in Moses Lake, we need to keep that in mind, because we have an asset here as well, which is the Port of Moses Lake. And so that'll become an interesting discussion, as I expressed to the mayor of Yakima, you know, we don't, as the city, have our sights set on having a large-scale airport here necessarily, but it's definitely something we want to talk to them about on a regional basis as this thing unfolds. That was about.
Mayor, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
I believe he's trying, trying to create an airport for some of the higher-technology planes that are making shorter flights, like the hydrogen-based and so forth, right? Did he go into that?
You know, that wasn't discussed very much as far as what type of air traffic, I understood. So, I mean, it's all types, really.
Okay.
So, yeah, it'll be interesting. I'm sure it's a long-term discussion, but Eastern Washington is finally getting noticed a little bit more statewide. So, and then on Friday, I attended the celebration for the Emperor of Japan's 64th birthday in Seattle. That was put on by the Consulate General for Japan in Seattle, and actually, that's where the airport discussion came up again. I was told Moses Lake will never get an airport. That was how that conversation started, and then I said, well, maybe that's okay. Maybe if Yakima gets one, it'll be close enough to us. So anyway, that's what spurred my imagination on that particular issue. But I will say, overall, considering the general chaos in the state legislatively and otherwise, that, you know, we're moving along pretty steadily here, and I'm very happy that we have some specific goals in mind, you know, water and the continued growth. And so I was happy to brag more than anything while I was over there on the city and all of our efforts here. Anyway, that's all I have. I will go ahead and call the meeting, or excuse me, adjourn the meeting, and we'll go into an executive session for 30 minutes to this potential litigation pursuant to RCW 4231101I, and there will be no further business. The meeting is concluded at 8:57.